Rain's gonna ask you, there's something on their computer in a little bit.
Ready, Chris? Yeah, I vaguely remembered it. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Stand and recite the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, the republic for which we stand. Let's pray. Lord, thank you for this day. We ask that you would guide our path today, and more specifically, our thoughts, words, and actions. Please be with us throughout the day and help us navigate whatever comes our way. Most importantly, help us to reflect and live our lives in a way that is honoring you. Refill it for your own intentions. Public comment. Motion to approve the agenda. Motion and second on the floor. Any discussion to that motion? Not all those in favor, say aye. Oh, same sign. Opportunity for public comment. Nancy, what you got? Is it in regards to the, um, the plan? Okay, I'll give you five minutes, Nancy.
None of us are contagious.
No, that's okay. I, I, so, um, the deadline to, what? No. Okay, so, the, I, I try to remember to take this off while I'm speaking, um, and just leave it on when I'm just sitting in the room. Um, the, um, deadline to comment on the, uh, BLM's rewrite for the third time of the Sage Kraus regulations that the BLM uses is Thursday. I don't know whether it's close of business or, or midnight, Mountain Time, or Eastern Standard Time, but if you follow the links in that postcard, you'll figure out about that. All right, okay, so, um, what I am, I, I handed this out, and I think I gave you six copies, um, and I think I sent you a letter about this back earlier in the year, and I think I attached the letter from the Advisory Council on the Historic Preservation Act about how Game Fish and Parks has a pattern of walking away from tribal consultation when they're confronted with it on their property development. But, um, way back when, when you had, uh, the shooting range ordinance, Barry Hills Audubon testified that you should have in there something about, um, protection of cultural resources and about having the developer consult with the tribes and state historic preservation office, which my suggestion, you did not take. However, you did discuss with Game Fish and Parks the protection of the cairns and concern for the public for disturbing the cairns, and the Secretary of Game Fish and Parks, Kev- Kevin Robling, told you not to worry about it because they were gonna put a fence around the cairns. And subsequently, John Cantor has told me the state historic preservation office had not been asked about putting a fence around the cairns. They don't want a fence around the cairns because they think it will draw attention to it. But, um, what you had is apparently somehow the tribes were never consulted back in November two thousand twenty-one, which they were supposed to be. When, uh, Game Fish and Parks changed the design, that, Game Fish and Parks went through NEPA process, got a finding of no significant impact, um, and, and then they came to you, and you guys required a change of the design for several factors, couldn't shoot over, uh, section lines, and rerouted the road on the south side, uh, the section line to be with the road on the south side. And then Game Fish and Parks changed the design, they changed the orientation of the shooting bays, and they added two new shooting bays up by the cairn, and they submitted these designs to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in May of two thousand twenty-three, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service looked at the new designs and said, oops, you've changed the project and you have to go through the whole NEPA process again and, and do a new environmental assessment. And then in, um, July of, uh, July twenty-eighth of, um, two thousand twenty-three, the state, the state historic preservation office had reviewed the new plans, very definitively told them they had to consult with the tribes. They had sort of said that in the, uh, November twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-one letter, which says, you know, we're saying no effect to historic properties eligible for listing, but, uh, you have to cons, we're, we're not, we're leaving you of the duty to consult with everybody you have to consult with. So finally, in July, they specifically said you have to consult with the tribes. So, and that letter went out to Game Fish and Parks, um, on the twenty-eighth of, of, uh, July, but despite that letter on the, um, I think it was the third of August, they put the project out for bid for dirt work, and, um, so then the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service on some sort of those magical Zoom-like telephone calls on August thirtieth told them they had to consult with the tribes, and they could not continue disturbing anything. But Game Fish and Parks signed a contract for the dirt work, and I was told that contract said they was gonna start in January. All right, so, I, I'm just, I'm just telling you what all happened here so that you know. And, um, and you can read about it in detail, okay? But I suggest, and there's no hurry because we're not looking at any new shooting ranges, you go back to your shooting range ordinance and do what I asked you for, which is to include in that a consultation with tribes, because if you had included that in your shooting range ordinance, we wouldn't have this mess. We're Game Fish and Parks under orders from-
That's your time.
All right.
Nancy, is there any questions for Ms. Robling? Anybody else for public comment? Sir, Eckard. Five minutes as well, sir. Please announce yourself.
I'm Larry Ebert. Live on Elk Creek Road. I've been to several of these meetings, and, uh, frankly, I'm very unhappy with the county commission and your actions on Elk Creek Road. I've never received a offer officially. And, and almost certainly, when it happens, will, will wind up in eminent domain. You already have access across my property. And when I've talked to my representative, he says, it, when you go across my property again, you also wanna keep the current access across my property because people north of me might need that access. Well, on the west side of my land, there's a section line. You can go up north as far as you want on a section line. You, you have given somebody access to my property on my land on a private road without my permission, without even discussing it with me. You know, frankly, as, as I've done my reading, I don't think Elk Creek Road would, would be defined as an urban arterial. An urban arterial is between like a interstate and then a major city. Where's the major city? It, the interstate has, you know, Rapid City has several accesses to the interstate. So how does this qualify as an urban arterial? Anyway, I'm very unhappy, and when you give me a proposal, which you never have, uh, I'm sure it's gonna go to eminent domain. Questions?
Doctor, um, at, at, after the last meeting, you told me who you had for counsel. Are you saying, and I talked to the council, the county had, and told him to reach out to your counsel. Has he not done that?
Well, he said you can't do anything until you actually give me a proposal.
Well, no, I, my question was, did our attorney contact your attorney?
I have no idea.
Okay. Well, I'll follow up with our attorney and then see if he's contacted your counsel and started kinda giving the information, starting dialogue. So I'll check on that.
No, I don't hear now, but it's starting in July, I'll be gone for three months, so I'll be available by own. But anyway, I don't think you've done a good job. I don't. You know, the proposal to make Elk Creek Road an urban arterial goes back to studies fifteen years ago, and there were five studies, well, four studies, and one being the current alternative. But the current alternative is the current alternative there for the entire road from the interstate to Fifth Avenue, or Fifth Avenue, all the way across. But the four, the four actual proposals that changed that route only involved the land from the interstate to the Gingras property area. None of those proposals looked at what, what would you call the S curve? None of them.
All right, this, uh, we didn't, we did one study that looked at alternatives, and I recall that study correctly. Some of it did look at eliminating, it did look at alternatives and eliminating S curves.
I've never seen that, that study.
Yeah, well, um, that's, that's kind of the basic design we're using at this point. I see your arterial comment. I'm just telling you the future development, that it's gonna hit the corner of what you call Fifth, which is Haynes thing in Elk Creek. Expected growth out there already is, you know, probably five hundred houses before the end of this decade, probably a thousand, just around that corner. So I, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that I love the increased traffic. I, I was the county, a lot of, but trying to deal with a lot of issues here. Got a nice piece of ground, and I understand your complaints, but we've got limited options to that area.
Then if you steal the, the land across my property, how can you possibly demand that the current road remain? You know, I talked to you, and you said, well, the people in the north may need access. You have a section line.
Any other questions for Mr. Ebert?
I, I would like him to, I would like an answer to that.
Yeah, so, the, the, what he's talking about is the existing Elk Creek Road, which, you know, the S curves, is he wants to do away with the exist, us have a tear out the existing Elk Creek Road that's, as it crosses his property. And, and it, and you, when you look at the area, that doesn't make any sense because you can use that as a loop back into Elk Creek Road that will serve multiple houses and multiple future, what will likely be multiple more houses in that area. Um, Dr. Everett himself has forty acres. I know he's not gonna do anything with it, but in twenty years, if somebody else goes to chop that up, you're actually not gonna want them to get out on Elk Creek Road there. You're gonna want them to get off on the existing loop and have that traffic flow out that way and come into it because you're, you're gonna, because of the traffic flows that you're gonna have in the future on Elk Creek Road, you wanna limit subdivisions accessing directly on that or limit those number of spots. So, I, I fully understand that he's getting hit because of just the way his property lies. Um, but the balance and the difficulty is to make it work long-term for what's going on everywhere. I think the best solution is what the county's pitching right now.
Well, if, if you look at the map, I didn't bring a map, I was, last month I had actually a map, but the current road goes through my property. People to the north would have no access to that current road because the, both sides of the road are on my property. There's no access. But on the west edge is a section line going north and south. So people to the north, you could give them access right there.
But the difficulty is that what you're asking is for us to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars to tear out the road, and then you then would limit all that traffic to one entry point to Elk Creek Road, where we've had this issue with a lot of spots where you need, to actually develop the property correctly, you need two ways in and out. So the difficulty is that what, the Elk Creek Road comes across your property now, and in the future, then, if we did what you were doing, number one, it would cost a substantial sum of money for the county. Number two, the people that were accessing that loop then would only have one way in and out, and you would have a choke point down at that, on, on the west side because they'd have no access to go east. They'd have to all come in one way or one way. And, and the future growth in that area, you would expect to see a number of, of more houses built that would need that access, two ways in and out.
Well, that's another issue. I think the county should react to growth, not promote growth.
Well, believe me, we are not promoting it because we are constantly chasing it, and it's a big problem that we have.
Again, I, I have received no proposals. Uh, so I haven't been able to discuss with my lawyer, but this is almost certainly going to eminent domain. I mean, I'll tell you, this is not, this is not fair.
Is there any more questions, Ms., Dr. Ebert?
The only thing I'd say, I certainly understand his rights to contest this, um, and I'll follow up with the council because I, after the last meeting, I asked our council to contact his council to kinda get him up to speed and start discussion and dialogue to address some of these issues.
There's a lot of this discussion needs to handle.
Yeah, and, yeah, it has to be handled there. So I'll follow up again.
And, and I understand your sorrow, because that's really what it is.
No, it'll, it'll only be sorrow after I lose.
Well, no one likes their land chopped up if, if, if they're not the ones chopping, shall I say.
Thank you, Dr. Ebert.
Well, no, the other, the one other question is, do you plan to buy Edgemont Place?
I don't know, I don't know Edgemont. Sure, I know what you mean by buy Edgemont.
Well, Edgemont Place is a private road across my property that was set up by the Gingras when, when he sold the land in that area. It provides access to the people up the hill from my place. But it's a private road, and you have granted access to somebody to that road who is not in that proposal.
Yeah, so that, area of that road is maintained, controlled by a road district in the county approached. The county got a confirmation to allow that access. Um-
But the land is on my property.
There's, yeah, as you acknowledge-
The road district does not have the authority.
As you acknowledge, there's been a long-term access road there before you even owned it.
No, 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 it, 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 well, not the actual, you know, there were, there were people driving up, and, but there was not an actual road there. I mean, I couldn't put it in, but-
There's like twenty houses already served by that road.
But again, well, uh, nobody has certified that road.
I think we're going on, yeah, then, like, answer for it?
Well, the only thing I can say is, council that we've hired, who's been hired to deal with Elk Creek Road.
Yeah, that's all it, I, my knowledge is.
There's a desire for you to, that you wanna sell another portion, or sell that easement area, your council could bring that.
Oh, we're, I don't know how many more questions you have, Dr. Ebert, but I-
I have a question.
Edgemont Place.
Okay, one, Doc, Commissioner Creed, go ahead and ask a question.
Talbot, is that particular road, as it goes through the doctor's property, is that part of the road district?
The road is maintained by the road district. I do not, I'd have to look to see if it's been maintained by the road district, and before that, the homeowners association.
Would this be similar to the, uh, court action that involved the Greslin land down by Ted's?
Probably, yeah.
Would you mind mentioning to the doctor what happened there? Because if they are similar?
Well, I've not read that decision. I only know that generally, but that-
Well, in general terms.
It has to do, it has to do with a road that hadn't been in existence, um, or the court determined it was basically. Um, and he and I talked about it briefly. He has counsel-
Oh, okay.
And that's why I told him that I would have our council call, and then if his council wants to raise those issues with our council, I think that's where the discussion should be.
Okay.
Um, and so I will follow up with our council.
Now, I, I'll tell you, had you come to me, that there's somebody building not adjacent to your property, and they wanna have access to this private road, well, actually, they wouldn't need it because they, they could have, they would have had access to Elk Creek Road directly.
Okay, Dr. Ebert, I'm trying to remain consistent on time, and, and I-
But anyway, had you come to me and said, this person would like to have access to that, I probably would have agreed to it. You didn't do that.
Certainly. We'll have our, Talbot's gonna follow up with our attorney, and, and we'll, we'll be in touch, I guess, so.
So in the eminent domain suit, that'll kind of come up, I'm sure, as inappropriate actions by the-
Thank you for your time today. Anybody else for public comment? Gingras, is it in regards to the agenda item on the fee waiver, or you got something else? Okay, if you, yep, if you'd like to come forward. I'll give you like five minutes.
I, I just wanted to, uh, my name is James Gingras, um, Mead County resident. I just wanted to advocate for the doctor. I feel like he's getting a real raw deal. The Elk Creek Road, I think it could be fixed with the slower speed limit in that area. I noticed that there's no, uh, lower speed limit, suggested speed limit sign for any of the corners on Elk Creek Road. Usually, when you come up to a really sharp corner, which is what all those corners are on Elk Creek Road, there's a sign that will say suggested thirty-five mile an hour. It's usually ten below or so, below the posted speed limit, and there are no signs like that. There are, you did finally get arrows up, and I know, I, I hear people all the time just get on it in front of my house, and then there's that corner, and it looks like you can go straight, but you can't. And there, there's arrows, you finally put arrows in there, but I used to watch motorcycles rocket off the end of that road all the time. Um, and I, I feel like if you just lowered the speed limit, it would solve a lot of iss, a lot of dangerous issues. Um, straightening that road, I feel like it's gonna, it's not gonna be single car accidents anymore. It's gonna be head-ons, because people like to just, they come out there and test their cars. They do burnouts in front of my house. Um, I hear it all the time, they pass slow people. It's always right in front of my house. A lot of action. So I just, I just think that spending millions of dollars to straighten that road is just, is just gonna transfer the problem to a different, different way, different outcome. It'll just be head-ons instead of single car accidents on that corner. Uh, anyway, my other, uh, subject was just, just the elections again, and, uh, that, uh, that I would like to have, uh, an audit trail provided. I know you won't do it, but I would like it, an au, um, it's federally mandated audit trail. And then also, I have a, a letter from Sheriff Darleaf, Sheriff Darleaf, uh, on the Chinese-made motherboards that, uh, they're actually testing those motherboards in country, so they're double compromised, not only made by, uh, an enemy country, but also tested by an enemy country. Anyway, that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Anybody else for public com, any questions for Mr. Ebert? Anybody else for public comment? Anybody else for public comment? Close the open public comment. Equalization.
Good morning, Commissioners Rea, Crane. Best news that we have for this year is that we have no Circuit Court appeals or OHE appeals. First time in a few years that that has happened, so we're glad to be moving on to reappraisal projects. Uh, the appraisers have been out in the field. They visited seventy-eight properties in the month of May. So we're off to a start. I think that I, we have about twelve hundred properties that we need to visit this year. Preliminary work for Platts and Splits is done. Um, forty-three have been processed, waiting for us to create a future file, which will mean that we'll, we'll be starting our twenty-five work. Unfortunately, we're still having issues with AxioMatic, and I can't get our abstract information uploaded. Uh, we've had three tries at it now. I'm working with a programmer from Incode to try to get our TIF reports, which is what they claim the problem is, so we'll see if, if we can get that resolved and get that off our plate and move, moving on. Uh, the appraisers and the planners had worked together to come up with a new system for building permits to ensure that we're not losing anything, that we're, we're able to, the appraisers are, are able to follow up with all the field work that needs to be done. We are anxiously awaiting the summer study, which will start June seventeenth. First session is June seventeenth at nine AM. If you all want to follow it, there is a Zoom link. We'll be participating in that in any way that we can, or offering suggestions in any way that we can. And it's budget season. That's always exciting. More exciting this year than ever, I guess, but that's where we are.
Questions for you? Thank you, Rea.
Thank you.
Utilities, Ben, you have anything? You have anything, Ben?
Ben Petrakko here, Mead County Utilities Director. I just have a short report. I don't have a lot more.
Ben, your microphone.
Okay. Um, pretty similar to last month's report. We're just ramping up our outdoor work. Um, we had forty-five work orders for the month of May. We had three after-hour call-ins, all in the jail. Couple of them were false fire alarms, and there was one that was a HVAC cooling issue. For some of our outdoor stuff, we've got our sprinkler systems charged and activated for all three buildings and have made the normal repairs and adjustments. That, that always takes a little while to get everything going after the long off-season.
It looks beautiful out there.
It's starting to come around pretty good. Got, newly's got most of the mulch all put in the new beds and stuff, so looking better. We have started on the courthouse front step, staring nose replacement and concrete patches. That's kind of a slow process because we have to work around the court scheduling. We can't be drilling out there, obviously, when there's courts, so taking a little longer than I would have preferred, but, we had another air compressor failure in this building, actually, for the, uh, compressor that drives the dry type sprinkler system in the upper level of this building. The tank on it actually rusted through and developed a small leak, so we ended up having to replace the whole thing. I know, I mean, it's a, I guess it's probably close to the end-of-life expectancy for what the, when the building was built, the original one, so.
You mean it's, it's the original from eleven years ago or a hundred?
Not, not quite a hundred, yeah.
Okay.
No, I don't think they had sprinkler systems back then.
I, well, I didn't think so. That's why I-
Yeah, no, it was from the original remodel, I should say.
So, things don't have a very long expectancy anymore, do they?
It, it depends on what it is, but some of this stuff, yeah, it goes pretty quick, especially anything that's got any kind of electronic stuff on it. We did install on this new one a automatic purge valve for the moist- We did install on this new one, a automatic purge valve for the moisture, which I don't know why they originally didn't put that on there because that's kind of a standard thing on those compressors that run a lot, but that helps get the moisture out of it, you know, on a time sequence, so. The new one does have that, so hopefully that'll keep that tank in better shape. Um, what else do I got? Uh, on the highway shop side of things, we had a kind of a major deal. Their radial antenna on the main Sturgis shop, the brackets broke on it and it had flipped over. It's actually still functioning while it was flipped over, but we finally had a day that was, the wind wasn't blowing forty, that we were able to get up there with the boom truck and get it reattached and the radios all seem to be working good again now, so. That's kind of all I got on that report. You know, we're working on some parking lot stuff coming up, trying to get. I'm holding off on any painting because I'm trying to get that possibly in with the seal coating that's gonna happen from the same company so that our lines can be professionally painted. They do hold up a lot longer and they do look nicer, so I'm hoping that when he comes back with his proposal, it'll be within the budget to include that. That might happen according to him sometime this month, if they can fit us in, so. And all I got for the month of May, early June, I guess.
Any questions for Ben?
What exactly is happening to the HVAC system?
Um, well, we've had, one of the, whi- which part are you referring to?
Well, when you said your after hours in the jail.
The call-in stuff?
Yeah, I was just wondering if.
We had, we had all.
That system's old.
Yeah, well, this, this particular call-in was due to thermostats that run the pods were, were actually making clicking noises. All, and they couldn't tell what it was coming from. It, uh, it was pretty loud. It was like just one after another clicking throughout the night. Like, I was able to come in and kind of catch it in the act because we hadn't really seen that when we've, they'd reported it a few times. But what it ended up being was, I think the temperature in there had changed to the point where the plastic stats that were mounted on that wallboard were actually, when they do their relay thing, they were flexing just enough that it was like a plastic noise. Yeah, so I ended up having to just kind of loosen the screws on all of them a little bit.
So it wasn't be, it, it wasn't a, a failure of the actual system?
No, that one, that one wasn't. Um, we've had, we had the main control room heat pump backed up one time that they weren't getting any cooling in there. And it was because, it was actually because of a mode that it was set on that they had switched. Another thing I did in there is I relocated that thermostat. It used to be out by the, right by the entry door. I feel like it was getting a lot of cold draft from the booking room all the time on it and so it wasn't representing its space well. So I moved it around the corner on more of an interior wall on that bathroom. And I feel like it's working better now since then, but I haven't really got a report from anybody on it. I don't notice any big difference, I guess, but. Yeah, just a lot of little stuff like that. There hasn't been any major, major failures so far. We're just starting cooling season, so that usually gets pretty, pretty busy when everything gets full, full bore cooling. We've been bouncing back and forth on the courthouse between heating in the morning and cooling in the afternoon and hopefully we're kind of beyond that now and on at least cooling season only, so.
So then, did you turn the boiler off?
I did.
Good.
It's, it's shut off now. It's, we're no longer, no longer burning gas in there.
Any other questions for Ben? Thanks, Ben. Thanks, Ben, busy. Uh, IT, Tony, have anything?
Morning Commissioners, Tony Cummins, IT. Um, just real briefly, along with the KPIs, busy month for May, um, usual day-to-day stuff. Work orders, support tickets, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I did add, uh, along with that, I did add a second document to, uh, my presentation today, um, just to go back on last month's, uh, commission meeting where we implemented our malicious domain blocking system with the, uh, CISA and Dakota State University, et cetera. Um, that brief infographic that I supplied for one week of, um, network traffic was really eye-opening to me. Uh, you know, I know it don't mean a whole lot to general, general user, but basically, you know, nearly one million eight hundred thousand DNS requests that are leaving our facility going out to, you know, all over the internet. Um, this system itself, um, no cost to the county and it is, it's, it's playing a, a huge role in eliminating the end users from connecting to any malicious websites, email campaigns, et cetera, et cetera, for phishing. Um, the next stage of that now, we've, we're on our second week. I did get the second week's numbers in here. They're pretty similar, a little bit higher, um, higher with regards to malicious websites that is actually catching and blocking. So, uh, we do have users unbeknownst to themselves, um, you know, either through email or web browsing or advertisements, et cetera, et cetera, are trying to be redirected to these malicious domains for further, you know, downloads of potential ransomware software, et cetera. So, uh, this is a good tool for the county for sure. Um, I was gonna give it about two or three weeks to see the results and then move on to the next, uh, phase of it, which would be to implement, um, a second piece of that to be able to backtrack and see who, what, where and when. Right now, it's just, this is what's happening on the outside. I, the IT department has no way to, uh, backtrack to see who, where, why, et cetera. So I think a good piece to add to that would be the, um, the reporting end of it. I'm gonna try and implement that over the next week or two and we should have better results then.
You know, I'm a real, you know, I'm a real neophyte on this stuff. So you were saying on, on that first graph where you, you were talking that million.
Uh-huh.
Is some of that coming from us out into the great world, web world, or is it the web world coming into us?
It's all external requests from the county. Every time you open.
We're going out.
Yeah, every time you open a web browser, a tab in a web browser, that communicates to wherever that website is. Uh, you have your email running in the background that's communicating in the background, et cetera, et cetera. So everything that's on the computer, that's internet, connected to the internet is actually uh, doing recursive DNS lookups to, uh, find out where you need to go. So for example, you know, google.com, um, we use a domain name to get to google.com. Well, actually in the internet world, it's a phone number, basically. It's an IP address. And so the recursive DNS actually translate that to human readable domain names to get to where they need to get to.
Okay, so say I'm on a computer and I look up shoes.
Mm-hmm.
So then you're saying because I've got, I know, Tanya, I am, I'm a neophyte. So we all know as soon as you look up shoes, you're just gonna be inundated with every brand and size and everything. So how long does that stay? Does, does that thing of shoes continue to feed out over and over and over again, or just the one time you make that request for shoes?
So just the one time is the request for the search results and then every click after that is requesting another DNS recursive lookup.
So then it, say you got one here and then it just multiplies and multiplies and multiplies and multiplies.
Yep. And like I said, there's nothing, there's, you know, this is unbeknownst to the end user. This is all transparent in the background, so they're, they're not getting to where they're supposed to be getting, not supposed to be getting, I rephrase that. They're not getting to where the malicious advertisement or whatever wants to redirect them to. This is all being blocked and stopped in the background.
The other day, you know how on, on the right side of your computer?
Mm-hmm.
You always get some.
Advertisements?
A bait click story.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, I was not on the county computer. So I clicked and I knew I shouldn't. I clicked, I thought, that story sounds interesting. And so then it, you know, came up, the malicious thing or whatever. So I closed down the computer and started over again and everything. Are those legit warnings? I mean, I've, I haven't gotten one for a long, long time, but I consider it a legit warning. Is, is is that kind of some of these threats that we don't see that are behind the scenes that this, uh, Madison group diverted?
This, this, that could be very well what you're referring to. I'd have to see the exact pop-up or warning that you received. It kind of sounds like you were browsing internet. You opened a legitimate website and advertisement was loaded and the advertisement had malicious code and whatever antivirus you had on the system popped up and tried to stop you, warn you. That sounds like what it was. But you also have what's called dry-bye, um, advertisements, which you don't even have to click them anymore. As soon as you open that webpage and it has the advertisement on it, it'll open up that full screen size call this eight hundred number.
Yeah.
And that's usually, you know, it's, it's called scareware. It's designed to scare you into thinking that the computer's locked up and it's infected. In actual fact, it's just a phone number to call some guy in Indy who then will try and talk you into accessing your computer and, and on and on and on. Don't rabbit hole echoes.
You, you know, here a week or two ago, as most people probably know, something happened to Monument. And, you know, they couldn't even see patients and it knocked out their entire system.
Right.
Supposedly it was not an external thing.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard, uh, ins and outs of that yet, so.
Yeah, no, we probably never will.
Right. Any questions?
Questions for Tony?
Oh, yes, one more thing, sorry. Since you do our webpage, um, and since we're on YouTube now, could you put on our webpage how to, how to access our meetings?
Absolutely, yeah.
Because?
Yep, redirect it from the website to the new YouTube channel.
Yes, would you please?
We can do that.
Thanks, Tony.
Yeah, thank you.
Planning, Tanya.
Morning, Tanya Vig, Planning Director. Attaches the KPI and, uh, building permit graphs. Um, permits are slowly improving, um, as the summer continue on. Uh, mostly we're getting a lot of the commercial campgrounds for the rally are starting to gear up with some new buildings and stuff, so hitting those. Um, Planning Board, um, heard the changes of the Mead County Comprehensive Plan on June third and recommended it back to you guys for today for approval. We'll hear that later at the tentacle hearing. Um, one of the large pending projects, Elk Creek Properties, Mr. Hague and his, um, engineer Mike Toohey met with them in May and they had pulled the preliminary Platts for roughly nineteen new lots. Um, we're gonna, they're gonna rework that and come back and address the preliminary Platts later this spring or the summer, other than that.
I, I have a question on that. Is, is, are those lots involved in, in the TIFT area?
North of it.
Okay, thank you.
Other than that, um, like Rhea said, we worked with the equalization on building permits to ensure that, uh, closed-out tickets are correctly placed and they get picked up. Um, just kind of working through pro- progress. Any questions at all?
Questions for Tanya?
Thank you.
Uh, Sean.
Morning Commissioners, Sean Henderson, Mead County Emergency Management and Veteran Services. Pretty busy month, um, as always. Uh, so I actually did have a structured fire on Saturday, June first, weekend before last. Um, it was a single-family home and box elder, uh, uh, family, young family. Um, fortunately, nobody was hurt. Uh, they, he had a large pole barn that was completely destroyed and, uh, extensive damage to their garage and some smoke damage to their house. Um, I, I'm pretty sure that did you need something?
No, no, but I want, I want Tanya to hear this.
Oh, yeah, I, I, they're aware of this, right? Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, they're, we've communicated, so they're, for the taxes or whatever it is. Um, but I'm pretty confident that every single volunteer fire department within a thirty square mile vicinity, um, uh, responded to that. So there was quite a, quite a, quite a large group there.
Was there really a significant water availability issue there?
Um, from speaking to the fire department, uh, personnel, they had to tanker in quite a bit of water bec- and I, I didn't realize, I mean, common sense, I suppose, that there's no hydrants, you know, a system throughout in that rural kind of areas. So I actually learned that, um, being out there, but they tankered in quite a bit of water and Ellsworth actually responded as well with their engines. Did I answer your question? Apparently water was remedied, but it potentially it could have been an issue. Um, the very next day, um, there was reports of a, a tornado that touched down in Faith area for seven minutes and, um, no injuries or, uh, very little damage. Um, I kind of learned after the fact about it. Um, and to segue on that same subject, um, apparently there was a, a siren issue that, um, Ben was working, has been working on. Um, some, uh, some repairs he's been working with the, the, uh, manufacturer, I think, is who they are, um, fix that. Now I'll segue into, um, Crisis Track. I just want to give you a little blurb about it. I attended some training last month. So Crisis Track is a application, a program that the state has adopted, the whole state, and, um, it's paid for by the state, the subscription, which is free to the counties. Um, it is going to be, uh, in effect, um, starting next year in January and it will be the de facto, um, way to report any, um, uh, damage assessments to, to FEMA and things like that, flooding, roads getting washed out, that kind of stuff. Um, so what the program does is it, um, well, it's used, used in tandem with the Salamander and Rapid Tag stuff, so where you have a database of personnel and infrastructure, um, uh, building damage assessments, debris removal, tracking roads and bridges, um, used by, uh, obviously the highway department and police and fire departments to track evacuations and damage reports, water and sewer utilities, and then it's integrate, it's integrated with, it has GIS, uh, integrations, so, um, it's literally an app on your phone or a tablet where you can take pictures and, um, it's gonna take a lot of man-hours, uh, in order to program all the, the culverts and bridges and those kind of things in there. And you can literally go to an area and click on your phone and click like this culvert, this, this bridge, this culvert, this tower, this structure and it'll, um, kind of take them out of, you know, generate reports and things like that.
Will it interface with the Public Works, this, the Highway Department's new software program?
Well, I.
Which IDs all that stuff right now?
I don't know, uh, honestly. I know it, it, it doesn't speak directly with like the Salamander Rapid Tag stuff, if you're familiar with that stuff.
Yeah.
Um, but it's used in tandem with, so I, I don't want to assume that that's the same case with the Highway Department's software. But I, uh, had some dialogue with Troy, um, about it and told him that, uh, it's being adopted and, and he, I would like, well, the state will set up training, um, it's a day training, like eight hours, um, for us. They'll come to Mead County. Um, like Pennington hosted it. I went to their training and, uh, uh, I'd like to do this after the rally, obviously. But, um, you know, anybody that, I, I think the Highway Department and his people would be number one, um, of course, because they're out in the field and they'll be able to.
Right, and they've been loading all that data and that new software program that we implemented about a year ago.
That's great.
Help me out with the name of that program.
I didn't know about that. I think that's great, but I know it's, everything is databases. Databases can be merged.
Something like that, I, yeah.
Interesting. I, I wasn't aware of this till you mentioned it, honestly. But I know that databases can be integrated by, you know, pretty simply, like you can export and then change the fields and then import, re-import, you know, it's not, it's usually not a lot of work. That data input is the hard part and it takes time, um. So that's coming and I would love you guys to attend. There's a little crash course one where you're not really a user. That's only a couple hours and I would love to have that as well for like commissioners and things like that and maybe, um, the equalization people, you know, that kind of stuff. Um, um, kind of unrelated, but similar, um, SD five-one-one. So I signed up Mead County when I first started. Um, I knew it was coming. They opened it up to the county. So I signed up Mead County when I first started. Um, I knew it was coming. They opened it up to the counties to volunteer for the capability to essentially shut off all the roads, the entire roads of, of the county, um, instead of just the state roads. Um, where if there's a, uh, you know, obviously, you know, Blizzard or, or whatever, um, we can, with a couple clicks of the button, you can essentially report it to SD five-one-one and it'll read, read out all the roads in the whole county. Now, Pennington has split their county up into two, um, because obviously, they have kinda the rural, like Box Elder Airport area in the city and then, you know, they have the, the hills and stuff like that. So, um, that may be something we might wanna consider as well, based on the size of our county.
Well, I would think there would be several areas that you, and you'd wanna coordinate with Pat and his department and...
Absolutely.
And all that, because we can have such variances, but so often, when the interstate closes, the county roads get really busy.
So, um, next...
With Talbot.
There's gonna be a presentation, like another Zoom call. Um, I wasn't, I failed to kinda pub, to, to communicate it probably effectively. So, you know, anybody in the county could attend this Zoom call. I didn't realize, um, what the audience was. But now, I know, what I know, um, knowing what I know, there's gonna be another one this fall where I'll definitely over-communicate it so people can attend the Zoom presentation. Um, they're still working out how it's gonna be implemented and not every county has signed up for it. So they're hoping to get a hundred percent, uh, uh, participation. And, um, so this, this fall, they're gonna fine-tune some more of the capabilities and, and the procedures, and then they're gonna implement it next year. So it'd be nice if they did it before the Blizzard season, but it may not happen until January or something like that. Okay, that kinda covers it for emergency managers. Is there any emergency management questions? And that picture is the back of my head, I'm getting... Geez, I need to get some spray, spray paint up there. It's getting worse. Geez, I'm gonna wear a hat next time.
I actually have one on the emergency management. Tanya, I might ask you to come up as well, if you could please. I, I'm just curious, I've been hearing, we've gotten, Rhea, I know you got a call about...
Oh, I got several.
The lack of water situation, um, and Talbot, you can chime in as well. Uh, we, in our ordinance, it, we're, they're required in these subdivisions to put so many fire hydrants and, and everything. What happens after that, though, is, is in the homeowner's control, or is that my understanding? And I guess if you could help me out there, like a subdivision like we had in last time, they had hydrants, it just, they weren't operating? Was that my understanding?
I'm not aware that they weren't operating. I don't think they existed.
It's the Royal Run.
There you go.
Yeah, and...
So, first of all, Royal Run predates Mead.
Me too.
And this is from like two thousand, and the standards of, you know, and what we've done as a county has changed drastically over. Yeah, I mean, so, up the requirements for certain subdivisions, but every, all water systems, not urban, city water systems. So, and there's a, there's a wide variety, I mean, what hydrants can support, even within cities. Pressure and whether you can draw directly or whether you can fill out of them, it's different. Um, so, for example, rural, rural developments cannot get funding to build for fire suppression. They can only get funding to build for human consumption and livestock. But they, but the funding will not support, the funding, the funding agencies specifically say that they will not pay for a, a system robust enough to provide fire suppression. So there are different kinds of hydrants. Some are just fill hydrants where you open them up and you take whatever water you can and you're trying to pressure. Some are, some hydrants like that you'd be familiar with, city, you can connect to it and you can actually pull out of it, pull the water out of it. Um, most of those, even within our subdivisions, even in our standards today, we don't have that kinda requirement for pull. Um, now, there can be some exceptions. There's that one going in behind Blexburg, and I think there's that, their hydrants are gonna be better simply because of elevation changes. But that's just happens to be because that's where they're at. Um, the development that's over, the old Blair Ranch development, they had to develop storage for those hydrants, but you still probably aren't gonna be able to pull, I mean, suck out of those hydrants, you're gonna have to fill out of those hydrants. So, and then, and as the commission knows, they've authorized, and Tanya has been working to try to get an engineer to review our water standards, see if there's some other things we can do, uh, because we've had, got some complaints that our current water standards, where we're, how we're making them do storage doesn't help on a fire anyway, because, because they're doing it all below ground and, and so you have to have active pumps to even get to the storage.
Do, do we know who now owns that water system? I don't know if that ownership changed when some of the land changed and...
Wasn't there an LLC that controlled that? Yeah, I think it's, it's an investor-owned group now.
Well, and, uh, they, they had regular water issues here a couple of years ago, remember?
They, they had water issues with the state, so the state regulates drinking water. The state does not regulate like fire suppression and stuff like that. They'll, they, you have to, you have to send your design to the state, but the design to the, that the state only checks it to make sure it's gonna provide proper potable water.
Okay.
For consumption, not, it doesn't provide fire flows. So, so you're not gonna get fire flows out in the county. I mean, fire flow, I mean, there's parts of Rapid City they can't get fire flows.
Well, back in my reporting days, I can remember going to urban fires and they didn't have water coming out of some hydrants. And if they're not properly checked and blown out and airlocked and...
Do you have anything to add? Basically, the county is doing what we think is appropriate to get, uh...
Yes.
Fire suppression in these areas to the extent, and then beyond that, it's basically on the owners or the homeowner, homeowner association's responsibility to check.
I'll just tell you, Pennington County in these subdivisions, fire suppression requirement, um, or sprinkling the house if you don't, where you'd have a, uh, would have a thousand-gallon cistern, uh, at the house location.
Well...
And have proper storage for, I think it's a ninety, there's a bunch of standards. I can't do them off the top of my head, but it's a period of time that you can get these flows from these hydrants and that's considered fire suppression. If you don't, you have to, you have to sprinkle your house. Sprinkling a house adds substantial cost, um, and so, but Pennington County's gone to that. So if you don't have, so if you don't have the storage capacity, so fire flows often turn on a couple things. Storage capacity and the size of your pipes. So, you know, we are not requiring storage capacity that would, that would give fire flows for these subdivisions. That is not in our ordinance, that you have that storage to run like ninety minutes, at so many, ninety minutes.
Is that something you think we should, or should look at particularly at the ones in the more forested areas?
Well, I think, you know, then you have elevation issues also.
I know, that's why I was...
The hydrants have all these issues, but, but, I mean, that would, I mean, Pennington County's applying that in their forested areas. Other, uh, that's kind of a, something that's said in public comment about how we're encouraging development. We're not necessarily encouraging development, but by the actions of Pennington County and Rapid City by making their development harder, gets developers into Rapid City, and one of, quite frankly, one of the issues we're having in, I mean, county, one of the issues we're having in Mead County is the developers that come here are the ones that don't have as much, a lot of them don't have this kinda financial backing that a big developer does. We have a couple of big developers that are doing it right, um, but we have a lot of small developers that are kinda guys in their pickup truck, doing it on the fly. They scream bloody murder when we start talking about their requirements. Um, and, um, and they're screaming bloody murder right now because we've taken a hard stand on a lot of not giving the variance past. Um, and Tanya's done a very nice job and caught a lot of flak for it, but the planning, the entire planning, uh, has been in support of making people go fly. As, me, I guess there's no reason Mead County should be lower in development just because we're in that.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. That answered my question. I just got a few calls asking about...
It was a bit preachy too, so...
It's fine. Sometimes you're a lot...
Sometimes I'm a little preachy, though.
Yeah, sometimes. No, I got a few calls that was concerned the county wasn't doing enough on, on making sure that we were safe with fires. So I just had to better ask questions.
And, and I will tell you, um, Tanya and I have been talking because we've been trying to get engineers to actually, to get hired. Engineers are very difficult to get time with, and so we're still seeking, um, uh, seeking to build that relationship with the engineering firm and have them make a hard look at our stuff and say, yeah, here's where you're behind and here's where you can do this better on the water issue.
And see, I never knew until delay, until just a few minutes ago that, uh, when D E N R does, approves all the water systems, that it did not involve fire suppression. I figured it did an overall view, so it's just a limit...
Just drinking water standards.
Thanks, Tanya.
Yep, thank you.
Any questions, so?
Yep, thanks.
Uh, do you have some more on VSO?
Yeah, well, I'd say fortunately, they were able to tanker in and they got the fire out very, very fast. Pole barn went up really fast. Okay, on the VSO side of the house, um, last month, uh, a hundred and twenty-nine veterans and claims and such, uh, eighty-one of those were existing veterans that we worked with before and forty-eight were brand-new veterans. Um, this month, I think, is gonna be my busiest month so far, um, pretty wild.
Are they coming in on that new fire pit thing, or are they coming in with...
A, a lot of them, but I, we're still, still getting a lot of Vietnam veterans that are aged and orange-exposed, that have never signed up for any healthcare or benefits whatsoever, and they're still coming out and they're Mead County citizens. Again, ten percent of Mead County is veteran, are veterans. Um, but yeah, the PACT Act, absolutely, a lot of them, a lot of phone calls, walk-ins, appointments, you know. Um, and then I'll, I'll leave this on a, on a good note, on a good, good story. Um, so on my spare time, I'm part of the, uh, Fourth of July, um, Committee for Piedmont, the Fourth of July, and we are confirmed that we have a Mead County pillar, um, Don Doobie, Donald Doobie. He was an educator for almost forty years in, in, uh, Mead County as a biology teacher, and he's a great guy and he does still golf, I guess, or at least, you know. So, um, it is being proclaimed through Piedmont that he is going to be the grand marshal for the parade this year. And for the first time in a long time, we're gonna have him marching back, so it's pretty, it'll be awesome.
What's his name?
Uh, Donald Doobie. D U B B E, Doobie.
He taught me biology, so everything I know about biology, I know from Don.
There's quite a bit. He taught a lot of people.
He was your biology teacher.
Uh-huh, uh-huh, yeah.
His daughter was also a, a teacher, Cindy.
Huh? Yes, right.
She's also a teacher here for a long time.
Right.
So, yeah, pending your questions or...
Anyone have questions for Sean? Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Any other departments have anything to report? Walked out, uh, it brings us to C one, uh, Mr. Gingras, you'd like to come back up? We, we have a waiver request.
Got ten o'clock scheduled here.
I'm gonna go with this real quick and... Rhea, would you just real quickly, like, tell us about what, uh, the request Mr. Gingras gave you?
As you can see in board docs, um, Mr. Gingras has expense, has requested a list of all expenses paid to ESNS from two thousand and eighteen to present, and he has, wants an itemized, itemized list of all expenses paid out of the South Dakota HAVA funds from two thousand and eighteen to present.
Does she have anything to add?
Uh, I'd just like the fee waived for accessing that information.
Questions, comments from the commission?
You know how much time your office put into that, the request?
I haven't put any time into it at present, just when I started to research the HAVA funds, locating the files was something that wasn't going to be immediately done, so I need to, I, I can't tell you exactly. I'm gonna guess it'll probably take two or three hours to locate the information.
So at this point, uh, Mr. Gingras hasn't paid any fees?
No. And our policy is that the first hour is, is, there is no charge. Anything after that is a hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah, so you're estimating a couple more hours to get it, to cover it?
I hope so. I mean, with any luck, it would, it would be in an hour or less. I just can't guarantee that that's the case.
I guess my main, my main question right now is, um, since we just completed one election and you've got this audit and everything else going on and we're short staffed down there.
I have no free time, that's what I will tell you.
If the time in which the request was made is probably the worst time of the year or the worst time in every couple of years that such a request can be made, that perhaps if the request is made in a few more months, it would be much easier to ascertain that information.
Well, I mean, we have thirty thousand residents in Mead County. If, if everyone came in with requests like this and we didn't charge, uh, we'd be in big trouble with...
I know other, other counties have given it for free.
Okay, question, comments, uh, interaction?
I'm going to deny the request. I'll second.
Motion second to deny the request, I'll, uh, any discussion on that motion? I'll recall for electronic vote, please. Okay, motion second, uh, on the floor, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gingras. Brings us to our ten a.m. scheduled hearings, brings us to D one, variance request, uh, ordinance thirty-four on Bonds subdivision. Go ahead, Ms. Pig, if you'd like.
Oh, okay. Yep. On June third, um, Planning Board met on variance, ordinance number thirty-four, Article two, one, eleven, four, for, to allow additional structures to be built on a platted parcel of land. Um, ordinance twenty was also requested, which remains at the planning, at the planning department. Um, that was approved. Um, this one is ordinance thirty-four, which was a recommendation to you folks with approval. Um, it's within the packet, um, for six tiny homes. Um, we did have restrictions on it that, um, let's see where I'm at. That the, the ABC submit the certified water, right, application, which came, which they did, uh, it came from D A and R yesterday. Um, it has been presented in the Faith Independent Black Hills Pioneer for the water permit. They completed that. Um, their permit will be no more than six homes. They meet all the requirements in ordinance twenty, which they have. And, uh, what else is there? It's a yearly review that they supply this county with a letter that this is still being used for the purpose of the variance. Mr. or Ms. Grabman and Jensen are here for any questions on the project, if you'd like to ans, ask them.
You guys have anything to say?
We've been, it's been a long process.
Before pronouncing sounds like that, yeah.
We are, we are, we are on the downhill side.
Sounds like it, yeah.
How many patients are you, clients are you handling out there on a... How many patients are you, clients are you handling out there on a annual basis? And do you work in cooperation with Sheriff's Department too, just in case any need arises? How's that work?
Well, I guess I'll give you an example of what happened yesterday morning at six a.m. Um, one of the residents, uh, came back to the outpatient property and appeared under the influence, um, refused a urine analysis test when asked, um, admitted to clinical staff that he had in fact gone out and used the night before. Um, he was actually someone that was working in our, um, clinical team for outpatient programming out of Lawrence County on a furlough and he was bonded out of Pennington. Law enforcement was called. I believe the sheriff out of Lawrence County responded, but yes, um, this is absolutely a choice that these people make to continue this process with us about the time they would enter into the tiny homes. We're looking about nine months of recovery at that time. They are requesting to have all these additional parameters instead of being relocated into the community as any other citizen would be. So I would say we absolutely believe, um, my method is the reality that drug testing is probably one of the best tools that we still have as a clinical team because it's very black and white. Um, everyone can tell us they're not using substances, but it is something that we definitely utilize daily just because if you fail a drug test, um, it's very rare when they're confirmed with the lab that there is ever a, you know, um, false positive at that point.
So you handle people that come in on a daily basis? Uh, do, do you have counseling? Tell, tell me about your program out there because, you know.
Yep, yes, ma'am.
You have evolved.
Yes, ma'am.
Through the period of time I've known you.
So currently out there on staff, we have two licensed professional counselors, which would be mental health licensed counselors. Um, there are three of us that are licensed in addiction counseling. Um, all but one of our staff have master's level credentials and operate Monday through Friday out of that location there. Um, the after-school program was placed back into the Mead School District after COVID happened. And so we thought it was a great use of that facility. Um, we also have, Girl Scouts are out there and then the Sturgis Pal entity operates their boxing facility out of there six days a week. Um, we have groups that run Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday evenings. We also host independent or individual clinical sessions. We provide outpatient counseling. We took over New Dawn Enterprises the end of two thousand and nineteen. So for those of you that weren't in the planning and zoning meetings, uh, the people that transition out have to graduate from New Dawn successfully and they have to apply to go to this location. And so we get to kind of know them. We get to see what they've done well during the time there because New Dawn's a minimum of ninety days. And then we get to kind of help them acclimate back into the community successfully. So to answer your question, we do a lot of outpatient chemical dependency, a lot of family sessions, mental health sessions, prevention education still in the schools. Uh, coalition meetings are still operating out of that location as well. We've really tried, the idea the board had was to kind of make it a one-stop shop for, you know, nonprofits to be able to utilize that space if they would like to. So the tiny homes would be kind of an additional opportunity for people that just maybe can't or aren't ready to relocate on their own at this time. That answer your question?
Yeah. Do you have quite a few people wanting to do that? Do you, do you believe you'll be full all the time?
I would say right now the list at New Dawn is eleven men that would like to be, um, looked at and considered. They have to apply through a panel of us as well and put in an application and do an interview with some of the other outpatient clients. And so it, it seems to have worked well for us to have people apply to do these things instead of kind of the state telling us who we do and do not have to accept, which is a blessing.
Do you do both drugs and alcohol?
Yes, ma'am. Um, all of our drug tests are observed. There is a twenty-panel drug test that is administered. Everything from kratom to alcohol to fentanyl is absolutely something we believe in.
Our twenty panels also have the adulterants. We can see if they're diluting or if it may be fake or something like that. It has the pHs and the specific gravity, so we can also add that other layer to see if maybe someone's trying to fool.
It's same one that parole board uses?
I think we're a little stricter. Um, we have decided to invest an ample amount of money to drug testing just because it is the only real reassurance. I think that's the hardest part. People don't understand how subjective clinical work is because I have to go off what gets presented to me by someone. And if someone is adamant they're following all the rules and doing everything they're supposed to, but a drug test provides me with different information, it's absolutely a different conversation at that time. So, yeah.
Any other questions from the commission?
Ready to make a motion unless.
I'd, I'd got to ask for, is there any, anybody from the public that'd like to speak to this? Saying none. Any other questions, comments, or action?
I'll move with the, that we grant the variance.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor to grant the variance. Uh, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for everything.
I think this is the D two, uh, variance request, uh, the variance request from multiple residents, ordinance thirty-four, two, one, eleven, four, Pioneer, Down subdivision.
This was presented on June third, planning meeting, um, for Mr. McPherson to build a new structure while living in his existing home that was approved by the planning board. At a time of cer, uh, certificate of occupancy being issued, Mead County would receive from Pennington County either the demo or the moving permit. This property lies right on the Mead-Pennington County line down there. Um, I have spoken to the planning director in Pennington County and this is the process since the current house is in Pennington. The variance process, he would take all of our paperwork down there and it satisfies their process also. That's where we are at. Um, we're, we'll also take over the septic system will be in Mead County and issued through us and the building permit. I'm just asking that, uh, existing house that he lives in remain until he has completed his second house.
Do you have anything to add, Mr. McPherson?
No, I, I, that, in a nutshell.
Any questions from the commission?
I'm just going to point out is, I mean, there's staff recommendations. Hear that? Uh, on the certificate of occupancy, property, copy of.
You want that included in the motion?
Yes, certainly.
That makes sense, yes.
Part of the condition. Um, so that's the only thing I'd say. And it makes perfect sense. He's just asking, but the, the whole thing is to make sure that the home actually.
Uh, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this? Cory, allow the commission to talk some more. Seeing anybody. Any other questions, comments from the commission and or action?
I'll make a motion to approve with. Longer on the property, copy of. Well.
Our motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Um, any discussion to that motion? Saying none, I'm going to call for electronic vote just so we make sure the motion is correct.
Oh, and the one, why, she's doing that. The thing I point out to the commissioners is, in working with planning, um, and trying to keep some of the information clearer for planning, both the commission, the planning and for the future. Tanya has developed what is in front of you or has been attached. Planning staff report format where it provides basic background on a couple pages supporting documentation. Clearly provides staff recommendations for variance. Um, uh, this has been, plan, the planning commission, because of the way it was just getting posted to the system, it was hard to make sure all the recommendations were staff. And then there was a concern when we've gone back to try to look for stuff, how you find it on our system, that this, doing a report format would be easier to track going forward. So this is kind of new, both commissioners to be seen. Appreciate Tanya. I'm developing it, weighing it out. I think it's, uh, I think it's going to help, especially when you go back and have to look to see what was done.
I would agree. Sometimes you got to go back multiple years and keep going and going and going and going to figure out.
Yeah, you're all of a sudden have to look at half a dozen meeting minutes to figure out what happened.
Yes, it can take hours on some of these projects.
Oh, but I had nothing to do with this one, just the history. The system minutes taken in the future, those, um, those recommendations are contained for someone people are looking at that they can see.
Sense is killing you guys.
We'll have to do a recount here and make sure.
I haven't seen anything either.
Probably after moving permit be provided is.
Recommendations.
You're good with how that reads?
Yes, I am.
What's that? Oh, you can't just change it on. So that looks right, Commissioner Wazork? Okay, I need discussion to this motion? Saying none, um, yeah, I guess we'll take the vote.
It, I got it. I, I think perhaps there should be some discussion as to whether there's ways to just adopt it with reference to additions contained in the report and what, any other needs, um, where we just drop those into the minutes then.
And that's fair.
I, I'm, yeah, that would be, you know, that would, you know, something along those lines, but I mean, it's just a work out that kink.
So mine didn't pop up, but I'll vote yea.
Did you get a, did you?
I voted.
You voted too?
I voted, yeah, mine popped, okay. That's been going too long.
Yeah. Oh, well, we can vote on the. We should be able to vote.
Yeah. We have good records.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time. Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Yep.
Brings us to D three, dealing with, uh, public right-of-way, dedication Fort Mead Way, one sixteen Common Line. Big go ahead if you want to. I think, and there's, there was a, an issue with this one, uh, the Dale Landfair is, was listed when it went out in the notices. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the application came in and the notifications to the surrounding landowners went out as Dale Landfair.
Okay.
And the current property owner is Landfair Land LLC Ross Landfair. Has been raised to my attention and during the planning meeting that that was an error. So I made a comment on the public comment, content. So this is the taking off the consent calendar and brought to public hearing to see if we need to take it back to planning and reissue the notifications to the surrounding owners and just start the plating plat over again, which is unacceptable to that. Um, it's Mead County Plats. It's asking for ten foot of additional right-of-way on the east side of Fort Mead Way and then a sixty-six foot access or dedicated road into homeless's property.
I'm going to make a motion to refer back to planning because, um, the wrong landowner was mentioned.
Public hearing, so before we do that, we should have, hear from the public.
Yep, you're absolutely right.
Right, but I thought you needed a motion on the floor first.
Is anybody here from the public, uh, here to speak to this plat or this, uh, request? Nancy? Is your microphone on?
Yeah, I just have some clarifications here. I've been staring at this and I don't understand it. Um, so this green line that they have on the map here, so you're saying that they are choosing to dedicate an extra ten feet on the right or left side of the existing public right-of-way for Fort Mead?
It's on the east side. It's ten foot on the east side. So if, if you go to the plat, it's the next, it's right there. So the hatched line on the east side is the dedicated portion that we are requesting. And then the piece that runs east of Ralph's Way, that aligns with Ralph's Way on the bottom of the map.
Yeah.
Would also be a sixty-six foot dedicated public right-of-way.
But that's the normal sixty foot, so normal section.
Yes.
All right, so, um, so the sixty-foot normal Fort Mead right-of-way already exists.
Fort Mead ri, right-of-way right now is a hundred foot wide.
Okay, so then it, um, it says that this is necessary before they vacate a section line? So the dedication of this public right-of-way is separate from a section line vacation? And that is, the section line vacation is not incorporated within this? That would be a section subsequent act?
Yeah.
Okay, do you know it, or is it premature and nobody's told you which of the many section lines around here?
Uh, yes, it's the one that runs, well, north to south, it's finer, it's, oh, sorry.
Yeah, but is it that red one that runs kind of parallel to the green?
Uh, could you go back to the map, Rhea? The colorful map? So it'd be the green line or the.
Red line.
The red line to the east of the green line?
Yes.
So, so would it be, and then would it, would it?
It's between section thirty and twenty-nine.
Wait, it, would it go below that, um, sixty-foot, um?
The little.
Does it run totally parallel to all the north-south green? Um, or does it stop where that, um, that sixty-foot thing going off to the east? How, how far does the section line vacating go?
The, the green line that starts in the section corner on the north. The, the green line that starts in the section corner on the north.
Yeah.
So we are short, so we start, the vacate would start on the section line right of way, not the center line. So we start on the section line right of way in south, because we gotta leave the section line open that runs east and west. And then it runs north to the ni- to the south section line of twenty nine and thirty, to the right of way of that, to the north right of way line of thirty and twenty nine. We, we're gonna leave that section line open also. Yeah, I, I.
I'll have to stare at it and I'll have to ask you about it again.
Okay, yep.
But that, that is not happening right now.
No, it is not, we needed to work through the plating process first.
And so you're adding ten feet so that, um, people can have a sidewalk or something to walk along?
We're adding ten feet, um, to the east, so the road will become an arterial road of a hundred and twenty foot dedicated public right of way long term. Part of the master transportation plan, so if the west side ever gets developed on the northeast corner there, it would also dedicate another ten foot. It'd be a hundred and twenty foot public right of way.
All right, well, one of the things for public right of way around section lines. So, um, how will that be preserved along the side? Now, for example, right now, you can access a couple of those. Dock or whatever, so, so, um, how are you? Oh, well, never mind, um, this is not the section line vacation hearing, I'll stop wasting your time.
So, I, I'd like to hear from Mike, Mike Charnholm, since he's here from planning and, and, uh,
Mike, you.
voted against this, if, if he wouldn't mind commenting.
Please announce yourself.
Yeah, Mike Charnholm, uh, Mead County Planning. Uh, one, one of the purposes that we did vote against this, uh, I believe it was Shawna and I, is, first of all, we have a different name on the application, um, with response from Dale Lampier, who says, I have nothing to do with this project. And all the letters that did go out came from Dale Lampier and not Ross on here. Um, also, um, we'd like to know what the overall, uh, um, plan, master plan is, on what is the, the vacation of the section line going to be? And what are we looking at here to get a full understanding of what are, what are we doing? It seems like we're piecing things together and not having an understanding of what that master plan looks like. And what is the intent of this, you know, right of way being granted? On another issue that had come before the board too, was vacation of the section line that runs, uh, runs about a half mile to the south of Ralph's Way. That one, we were pretty unanimously, um, five to one to deny the vacation of that section line also during our February fourth meeting, due to the fact that, you know, uh, abandoning section lines for convenience, whether someone's opinion is that that road could never be used or that section line, which creates a lot of land block issues that we've been seeing throughout the planning lately. And, uh, feel that if the section line is left in place, there's no purpose of vacating it in order to move it to Ralph's Way and put that on to the county and put it on to your guys' books or, you know, taking care of and everything. Ralph's Way is already in place, section line is already in place, and that's why we were a five to one vote.
We got that back on our agenda a little bit later.
Okay. So that was the purpose, I do think that we should probably have the correct name on the application.
Yeah.
Something that was brought up, whether it needs to go back through planning or what, but I do feel that, I can't put Mr. Daring's name on an application and have it pass through if you have nothing to do with the land rights that I'm dealing with.
Actually, I might lose if his name.
A- and I too con- conferred with Dale.
I think that's where Daring was taken, that's what it's looking like. Anybody else, do you have anything else to add?
I do not.
Anybody else from the public here on this line item?
Just a couple of things that I'd like to say, and, uh, questions Mike brought up. They've got, what they've been told is, they've asked to bring forth a va- vacation of that section line. What's been conveyed is there won't be in, there's no way that they can get that section line vacated unless they would dedicate additional right of way. Um, you know, I, you know, my assumption is the reason the engineer put Fort Meade Way where it is is because that was buildable and the section line has big issues. Um, one of the things that, and we've done this as planning before, is we've relocated or moved section lines where people have dedicated because it, road ends up constructed off of it. The issue then becomes if you leave the section line, there's a whole bunch of rules that apply to that section line where it could impact future development too, where it would make more sense not to have that section line there, given where the road is. Um, I've specifically told Ross and Shannon that, you know, there's no guarantee they get their vacation just because of this. But they, I know there's no way I would even consider a vacation unless you had these extra dedicated right of ways in place first. Um, so this was the step we told them before they could even, that if they tried to bring a vacation before they dedicated this additional right of way, you'd never get it, you'd, you know, you can't say never, but you said that, you know, I think both Rich and I conveyed we'd never vote for it without a, even consider voting for it without the additional right of way. So this is a two-step process, Mike's correct, there's no guarantee because it, those have to be separate public meetings, separate votes. Um, so that just kind of gives the background to address some of that area. Part of the issue was if you vacated that right of way, you had to have additional access to other properties and that's why there was some dedication right there on the picture now towards the top, showing, uh, area dedicated that's not on a section line is additional right of way. So with that said, one other thing I've noticed on this, Tanya, is their dedication, their plat does not accurately, it, on that markup that you've got on it, shows that it doesn't accurately mark, mark, actually show the existing right of way now, and that all needs to be properly reflected when they come back. If they choose to.
Thank you, Commissioner Wazork, yeah, I've, I've had similar conversations with those guys. And I agree, it's a, it's a two-step process and, and I, I think now we gotta send this one back to the, the planning just to make sure everything is correct on it. Any more comments, questions from the commission interaction? Daring?
So we make my motion that, uh, this preliminary plat of the public right of way and dedication of Fort Meade Way, you can take all the legal description off of that, be referred back to planning. As, as.
Yeah, that's correct.
Corrected.
Be properly noticed, yeah.
And the whole process starts over.
Uh, I've got a second for that. A motion, a second on the floor for that, if you could type that up at least so we check out that motion. This. Petition differs slightly from the plat, we want to. Note it on yours. I want to see the motion. Go ahead and look over that motion, guys. Mike, can you see the motion as well, is there? Reason, the reason you're referring it back is they've gotta start the process over, proper notice.
Motion to approve.
Basically, you're denying this, this pending petition, directing that, that the notice be done properly and it work back to.
Or the plat?
Yeah. So that's, so that was heard.
But, or.
Yes, when was this heard in front of planning?
June third.
Hey, everyone, take a look at the motion.
Yeah.
Uh, can everyone see that, all those in favor, what's on our screen, motion on the screen, uh, any discussion to that? Bring on all those in favor, what's on the screen, say aye.
Well, he, he.
Got two different motions on our computer, all those in favor of what's on the screen, say aye. All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, uh, brings us down to a public hearing for the Mead County Comprehensive Plan.
Hello. So on June third, um, Planning Board heard the changes of the comprehensive plan, they were minor. Um, they agreed to the changes and moved to approve the plan, put it back to commission. Haley is here to equip PowerPoints, discuss the changes, and then make comments, um, about the comp plan again.
All right, so, um, again, this is just a brief slideshow to let people know the comprehensive plan. Um, so the purpose of the comprehensive plan provides a firm foundation for policy and action that allows the county to function more efficiently and effectively, helps strengthen the co- the county's policies, regulations, addresses current problems and issues, um, helps create a more desirable and certain, uh, future and is authorized by South Dakota Codeified Law, chapter eleven dash two. Um, the box next to this is just some of the points, it's not the full law of eleven dash two dash twelve, which is the purpose of the comprehensive plan, um, some of the aspects are, um, to protect the tax base, lessen governmental expenditures, conserve and develop natural res- resources. So what a comp plan is and what it is not, so what it is, is a collection of information materials designed to guide future development. Um, you'll sometimes hear to it referred to as a general or master plan. Um, typically includes a future land use map or other, and other visuals, um, it should be easy to read, um, updated regularly to reflect changing conditions, um, and then seen as a roadmap or a to-do list for creating a more desirable future. What it is not is a strict plan for regulating development, a zoning ordinance, um, the map you see is not a zoning map, um, subdivision regulations, capital improvement plan, building or fire codes, but these are specific documents intended to help the, um, implementation of the vision and the goals of the comp plan. So we are currently in phase six, uh, working through the adoption of the plan. Um, phase one, uh, we, we gathered, um, background information, created a public input strategy, working with the, um, uh, Planning Commission. Phase two, we released community survey and held stakeholders meetings, um, to gather public input. Phase three, we, um, collected all of that information, presented it to the Planning Commission and updated the community profile. Um, phase four, um, worked with, uh, creating a vision and goal setting sessions. Um, again, we reached out to the public for some, uh, public meetings and that, and then we created a future vision, um, based off of that information. Phase five, um, we worked through the drafting, um, several, uh, 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 plans, we continued through that. Um, and then phase six, we went out to the public again, um, to prevent, to present the draft of the public review, um, brought that information back to planning, um, and this is the document that we ended up with. And so, um, our steps, so we held the Planning Commission, uh, public hearing on June third of two thousand and twenty four. Um, we had one previous to that, um, but based on changes from this board, we sent that back. Um, and today, we are here to have another public hearing for this. Um, based on, uh, how you decide to go forward, um, there are two options, either, um, there'll be changes that, um, we'll send that and work back with the Planning Commission and go through the process again. Um, should you choose to adopt it, then we will go through, um, adoption per South Dakota Codeified Law, which requires us to publish a notice of adoption in the paper of record, um, after which, uh, the publication date, twenty days, the plan will, uh, be effective. And then after that is ongoing implementation and review of the plan. Any questions or?
Has anybody from the public wished to speak to this? Hilding.
Hi, uh, Nancy Hilding for Prairie Hills Audubon Society. And we see a serious and significant omission, uh, from the, um, land use, uh, comprehensive plan. And, and this is your need to put in goals and policies, uh, potent, what, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, po- potentially goal number two, three, and/or goal number four. Something about, um, Mead County wanting to identify significant cultural and historical properties that exist in Mead County in having a policy or goal to protect or at least mitigate impacts to those significant, um, historical and cultural properties. And, um, I have attempted, uh, you know, I, I don't know how to write goals and policies that's vague and open-ended enough to fit into a document like this, but, um, I think you need a policy three point nine, two point twelve, and four point nine. Um, and, you know, I've tried, um, you know, various ways of saying this could be, protect, uh, im- important or significant historic and cultural resources, collaborate. Collaborate with local, state, tribal, and federal entities to identify significant areas. Or consult with tribes in the state historic preservation office, uh, to identify significant properties when development could impact cultural or his- historical properties. Um, or just simply protect important historic and cultural properties from adverse impacts. But, you know, some language, um, and, and the one that I think it should most likely be in is, uh, goal three, uh, Meade County will work to per- preserve rural cultural natural resources and open spaces for the benefit and enjoyment of current or future generations. But it could also go and should go in land use and in infrastructure. I mean, do you want to put, uh, cell towers or giant, um, wire, electrical wire, uh, uh, utility poles up next to Bear Butte? And, um, and I want to tell you just a little bit about why we're so important on historical properties. We have Bear Butte, which is a very significant property to Native Americans, really to all of the tribes who existed in the northern Great Plains, which I've seen in number 36. It was very historically important. At least some tribes, I don't know about all of them, did not allow their average people to go up there. The average people would park out with a tents and whatnot at some distance and only the significant spiritual people would go to the butte. So, so your areas that were used are not just the butte, but the surrounding area. And, um, there is also, and I tried to talk to you about it this morning, the debacle that happened at the shooting range where somebody forgot to consult with the tribes till the very last minute. At which point in time they identified that it was a traditional cultural property, that there were eight significant, um, it's, uh, sites eligible for listing with the National Historic Preservation Act. One of these was a picture of a dragonfly laid out in stones or pebbles or something. And when Kristi Noem heard about this, uh, in, in November, she gave the order to just go out there and bulldoze that. You know, because they were going to get 2.2 million and a quarter from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to help build that property. But the way Pittman Robbins funds work, they can walk away from that, from the shooting range, and use it some, for some other game fishing parks, uh, policy project. So they really have no financial disincentive. And there was a letter from the historic, um, the Advisory Council and the Historic Preservation saying that game fishing parks has a pattern of doing this. That when they're told they need to consult with the tribes, they walk away from federal funding for projects for game fishing parks. But, um, we have what could have been a very significant cultural site that was bulldozed. And as I said earlier, I asked you to put consulting, uh, with...
Let's keep the discussion to the plan.
Alright, okay. So at any rate, so you, you, the, the issue is not just Native American historical and cultural properties, but it's going to be, uh, Fort Mead Way, old schools, old buildings. Um, you know, there's going to be cultural and historic properties associated with Caucasian settlement of, of, uh, South Dakota. So, you know, both, at any rate, it's significant, it should have been in there, and it's not. And, and I would like it added, and, um, and if you're, if you're going and re-cracking this thing open, in policy 3.2, you have collaborate with local, state, and federal agencies. You should put in collaborate with local, state, tribal, and federal agencies. And at policy 3.7, um, collaborate efforts with local, state, and federal partners. It should be collaborate with local, state, and tribal, federal partners. Um, okay, and there was another thing that, um, these are minor, and I'm going to shut up in a minute. Okay. So, um, you have policy 2.6, which is maintain the safety of residents and attendees of the Sturgis Motorcycle Rally. We suggest you need to insert in there, maintain the safety of residents, visitors, and attendees at the Sturgis Motorcycle Rally. Because there are Native Americans who will be going to Bear Butte, who are not, uh, residents and have nothing to do with the Sturgis Motorcycle Rally. So you need to be attend- attending to the safety of everybody who's hanging around Sturgis during the motorcycle rally, not just the residents and the rally people. Um, and you should have under policy 2.6, um, it, to manage disturbance to residents and visitors from the motorcycle rally. Because I know all these people who live in Sturgis that leave Sturgis, so is to avoid the motorcycle rally. So you have a significant impact to local residents from the rally and the dust on the roads from the rally. And so that's it. I would, I would like you to crack this open and add something about, um, identifying and protecting significant cultural and historical resources in Meade County.
Thank you, Ms. Hilding. Any questions for Ms. Hilding? Anybody else wish to speak to plan?
Well, here, I just want to say something. I gave you this map. It's old, antiquated. Um, because up here in this corner, uh, the Northern Cheyenne and Rosebitzie tribe have been dedicated at buying up property, uh, in the northwest corner. And the fancy cave or caves, I'm not sure which, were the, uh, sacred arrow around the north side of Bear Butte. And so the tri- this has expanded, the tribal imprint, and they've been paying a lot of money for this property that they've been buying up. So they are dedicated to protecting this area, and they are landowners in your county. You know, they may be tribes who are off in Montana and eastern South Dakota, but they care very much. Alright?
Thank you, Ms. Hilding.
Yep.
Anybody else wish to speak to the plan? Anybody else from the public wish to speak to the plan? Seeing anybody, any questions, comments from the commission? Questions, comments, and/or, sorry, you got, you got something else? Any other questions, comments from the commission and/or action?
I see the, the planning board unanimously approved the plan. Nancy, did you present in front of the planning board? Uh, you don't need to come up.
I'm sorry, I was real busy.
Hey, that's fine.
I, I, I attended to it as soon as I could. He can tell you what they think.
Any other questions, comments from the commission?
Make motion to approve as presented.
Have a motion to approve as presented. I need a second. Motion a second to approve as presented. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Let's take a short 10-minute break. Be back here at 11, 10 after 11. It is sufficient, but we could have added to have the chairman sign, but the commission passed it, so I can sign it. Is that right, Ken? Motion said to pass the, to pass it, uh, so I can sign it. We didn't need to add that the chairman needs to sign.
There's a resolution.
Question is, we, we...
No, no, that's...
Yeah, we, yes, yes, yeah. Yes, yeah, long as the commission passes it, I can sign it.
...
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, there was a lot. That's why I wanted to wait until they came up. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Troy, you ready to... If everyone could find their seats, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. If everyone could find their seats, I'll call the meeting back to order. Go ahead, Troy, if you want to start off traffic county land analysis.
Hi.
Thank you.
Any surprises there for you?
You know, they're actually a little lower than what I thought, to be honest. But I guess give it a month, right?
Yeah, yeah.
There aren't any questions, I can go to the monthly report.
I'm always surprised, there's a, there's a Facebook page called Sturgis Motorcycle Rally Eighty-Fourth or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Or Twenty-Fourth, whatever it is. And these out-of-state riders are always surprised when a, a map sends them on our county gravel roads, and they can't believe we have gravel roads, I thought.
Yeah, some states have every road paved, I don't know how they do it.
They have industries and smokestacks.
Mm-hmm.
And pollution.
And a lot of debt.
Mm-hmm.
And, that's right, a lot of debt. And high taxes.
Okay, the monthly report, this is all, you know, informational stuff from the previous month, statistics of kind of the budget and employees and different projects that we've, we've been working on. Um, I guess mainly the highlights would be, we started doing, uh, the Magwater applications over on Antelope Creek, and we're kind of working our way west this year, and, um, yeah. But we're also still in the process of gravelling and fixing culverts and drainage is kind of what we've been doing recently, uh, now that it stopped raining or slowed down a little bit anyway, so we can do our projects that we had planned for, anyway.
Any questions on the monthly report, Troy? Got everybody quiet today, Troy?
I guess so.
Thanks, Troy.
Thank you.
Uh, State's Attorney, F1, distribution of seized items.
Ken Clubber, Deputy State's Attorney. Um, there were items that were seized by the sheriff following a suicide last year at Bear Butte Lake. Uh, unable to identify any heirs or creditors, we published, uh, notice in the paper and went to the court for, to allow distribution or transfer of ownership of those items. There were thirty-four items that were related to weapons, and all of those were transferred to, the sheriff is required by statute. Uh, altogether, there were forty-nine items. The rest of the items were transferred to the ownership of the county. Um, I would like the board to consider three things. First, there is, uh, cash, a gold coin and silver coins, and I would ask the board to authorize that to be transferred to the treasurer to be deposited into general funds.
You weren't aware that that gentleman was my uncle?
You missed the notice, the judge did what he did. Uh, the treasurer has a plan in place as to deal, dealing with the gold and silver. In my mind, that is cash equivalent, um, the value is immaterial for bid law. So it's just the same as, there's roughly three thousand dollars of cash, and that will be deposited directly, she will find a mechanism to turn the gold and silver into cash for depositing to the general fund.
Do we have any idea yet how much that, those metals are gonna be worth?
There was a receipt for the purchase of the gold coin at just under twenty thousand, I believe. Not saying we will get that, because there, obviously, there's a retail markup. No, we have not shopped it, as of, as of yet. The treasurer hasn't even seen it. But there's a plan to transfer with the receipt from the evidence and the sheriff to the treasurer, so we'll track it.
Pat, how much do you think you're gonna get off the guns to a, a federal dealer, do you have any idea? But I mean, you know me, I know nothing about guns. Are they e- expensive guns, low, low-quality guns, or...
Pat, could you come sit down at the mic, please?
You know, there was a question of those legislators the other day at that session, and they wanted to know what, uh, what the candidate's favorite gun was, and I figured if I got asked that, I would just say whatever the sheriff is holding at the time.
Right, right.
I don't know.
Uh, there's, there's a miscellaneous, uh, types of firearms. Some are worth some money, some are just average price.
Like, what's an average price?
Well, it depends on what you're getting, there's handguns in there, there's rifles in there. It could be anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifty up to a thousand dollars, depending on what they are.
So there's no classic antique-type, collector-type, you know, Dale Hammack would know the whole cost of everything.
Right, right, and without actually looking at them and getting a valuation, it's, it's all an estimate.
And that'll be, that'll be traded in for, for short.
Yeah, I know, I was just curious.
Cause of retail, retail value, like Ken said.
Oh, yeah, I, I know.
And then the, uh, the sheriff is obligated, if, if the balance in the trade-in account exceeds five thousand dollars in January, he's obligated to report as an asset. The second action I would like is to remove from the list the vehicle, the truck that's listed, and, um, because that item will be in excess of, of five thousand dollars, it needs to be reported on the department's inventory every January. So I'd ask the board to take specific action on the item thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-one Ram twenty-five-hundred vehicle. Um, we now have an order from the court that can transfer ownership generally to Meade County, but again, a department needs to report it on their inventory, like they do any other vehicle. So, uh, the board needs to take an action as to which department needs to report that vehicle. And then thirdly, the remaining items, I would ask authorization for the sheriffs and the evidence department to transfer that to facilities. Uh, they can sort through, see with the, if there's anything that they think somebody needs or wants, and the rest can just be transferred to the primary building for consideration surplus at a later date.
How many miles on the pickup?
Forty-five thousand, roughly.
So you need three separate motions?
Uh, yes, I think, that would probably be best.
Notes here, but I think, um, yeah, I'll just, on the pickup, you need a motion just to transfer the...
For inventory purposes, it'll still be titled to the county.
Right, so there's no question, we don't, you don't need a motion to title it.
No, then we'll send off to for the title.
For short-term inventory purposes.
Yes.
And, I, you know, I think I'm, I'll just make a motion to have that inventory under the commission for now, until we decide. I have a motion to, uh, inventory this Dodge Ram twenty-five-hundred pickup under the commission, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, inventory that pickup, uh, is there discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, same sign, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to transfer the coins to the treasurer's office to, uh, convert into cash to go into the general fund.
Should that be coins and cash?
Coins and cash.
Coins and cash.
Okay, I'll second that. Motion is second on the floor to, uh, send the cash and coins to the treasurer's office, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
Adrian, you get the last motion.
Hard one.
I pass, I just want a photo of the gold and the coins when we get it.
I won't, I won't see it.
Okay.
Going from Pat to the treasurer.
So, the other motion was remove, remove the items to transfer to the facilities?
Yes.
For distribution amongst interested departments.
Well, or declare a surplus.
Or declared surplus. I mean, is, is that MacBook new enough?
You're not declaring a surplus at this point, because some departments may want, there's a toolbox and tools, as an example.
Yeah, the only, the only issue is, I also don't, I'm, we're gonna have a free-for-all, cause we might just declare some.
I mean, what happens to the am- ammunition? I, okay, but, but you had that from thirty-eight down, and that, you know, still, like... And there's a toy truck and a silver generator, what kind of generator, what's a CS generator?
No idea.
Once they get to facilities, you can, you can, you can go. So I'll, I'll make a, I'll take a stab at a motion, so I'll make a motion to, um...
About transfer items thirty, thirty-five, forty-nine, less the truck.
Yeah, to the facilities to determine how they will be dispersed.
He sure had a lot in that pickup.
He has, he had a storage shed as well.
Well, I, I know.
I'll second, we have a motion and second on the floor to transfer to facilities those items listed by Deputy State's Attorney. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
I, I, I want to make a statement, you know, um, Ken brought up the storage shed. Um, the state law changed, once the rent is taken out, all the excess revenue and/or parts go to the state of South Dakota now.
Thank you, Ken, uh, brings us to the auditor, G1.
You'll find them May, uh, both revenue and expense reports. For your review, there's no action expected, just wanted you to have this to review.
Um, my question is, is how long are we gonna let some of these malt beverage license hearings can continue on when they...
So if we are moving ahead to item three...
Does anyone have a question on these reports before we get to item G3? Hearing none, let's go to item G3, this is, we, last meeting, not the last meeting, we continued this, uh, it's, it can be, when's the deadline?
They have to be to the state by July first. I would expect that if we were to receive any in the next couple of weeks, that could present, be presented at the last meeting in June, that I could get ahold of the state and let them know that they're coming, I could fax them a copy and get them in the mail to them.
So the last time we approved, uh, all the ones that had, had submitted their payments for their license, and then we also moved to continue the hearings, so we could take, there's three or four left that...
Correct.
That have yet to pay us.
Correct. We did receive the application from Generations Wedding and Events Corp. on May thirtieth, so it is here for your review and approval today.
I would say if we haven't heard, heard from them from the next meeting, that done?
And, and that really impacts one major campground, is, I recall.
Uh, yes, it does.
Then it's on them.
Question is whether we'd hold special meetings. I, I don't, I, I guess the question, I, I guess the way I'm hearing it, the question is, how long are we going to continue this? And we can continue allowing them to pay their license fees until July first, but we can end at this at any time, if, I think that's the question, isn't that...
Well, I think the problem is, you gotta have, there has to be a renewal.
There does have to be a renewal hearing. We could technically present something to you at the, at the next meeting in June. I could let the state know that it's en route, I could fax a copy to them so that they have it before July first.
But I am not in favor of having a special meeting, because a couple of these people, it, this is not the first time out, so they may have to have their bars closed for a week or two. But you know, if you deny a license, they can't reapply for a year, and so...
A lapse isn't considered.
No, 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 it's not, but, um, uh, I, I don't know if these liquor, if these malt beverage license holders are aware of what happens when they're tardy.
Not wishing to have a special meeting, then to Ted's point, we would have to end the continuance at our next meeting in June.
Correct, and their, their license would no longer be in effect as of July first. And in my correspondence to Department of Revenue, with the first batch that I sent in, I did ask who would be notifying them on July first or thereafter that they'd no longer have an active license, and I have not got a response from them.
I would assume it would be, also could be the sheriff.
Pat needs something to do. So, yeah, I, I, I... So we're waiting on one, is that...
We're waiting on about three.
Oh, well then, look, I, I tend to think that we continue it. If they don't show, they don't show, and, like, it doesn't make any sense that we bend over backwards and cost the county money to rush something that business doesn't, doesn't seem to want to care enough about, uh, properly file their paperwork.
And, and for one, it's a major asset.
Well, it's a malt beverage license.
Well, I know, but they have bands and dances and weekend activities out there all the time.
So, uh, basically, we, I, I, if we want to prove this one, well, the one that's, that's paid, we'll need a motion to approve that, and then we'll also need to, if we could, motion continue to the next meeting, as I would say, till... We could put a deadline at the next meeting, couldn't we, Ken, and then we just end if we forget to continue it next time, wouldn't it? I mean, if we say the next commission, continue it until the end of the next commission meeting, would that be appropriate? I think we should...
I think just a motion to continue to the next meeting, I do not believe that your auditor will let you forget to end the discussions on, on the licenses, I don't think it needs to be in this motion.
Okay, that's fine. I'll make a motion to approve the Generations wedding.
Second.
Can include the continuance in this motion, I'll order, okay, okay, thank you. Motion second to approve the Generations weddings, uh, liquor license, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, same sign, motion carries. I'd make a motion to continue the application of sale of alcohol, alcoholic beverages till next meeting.
June twenty-fifth.
Didn't have this set for a time, sir.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor to continue this hearing until our next meeting at ten o'clock. Any discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Bring this down to communicate. Couple of updates from Rapid City as well as City of Sturgis, so is there anything that anyone would like to discuss within those updates? Not, let's go down to H2, which is discussion reconsideration of vacation right away, which is an item we had at our May fourteenth meeting. Um, Mr. Charnholm was here, he discussed that briefly in the last, not hearing, uh, anybody...
I, I asked for this to be put on. I asked for it, because I did not realize at the time that it had failed in the Planning Commission, five to one. I believe that's very significant. Um, and again, um... I don't see any real need for vacating this. So I would like to bring it back. So I would like to bring it back for reconsideration.
I'm gonna make a couple of comments on that. I've talked to planning, because I did point out to planning, they should have had the history in front of Planning Commission as part of the item. Didn't get put on. But during the course of the meeting, I did bring up that it failed in front of planning. I actually thought that I had, I hadn't been the only. Vote against recommending to the commission not to support it. But I did bring that up a couple of times. I thought there was one other person to vote against me, but I was the only one that voted against it. So I want it clear on the record that that information that it failed in front of planning was made by me.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I missed it and.
Okay, so there's.
I guess again. Why? I realize that they're not gonna build a road out there. But again, we've got a lot of section lines that they're never gonna build another road on. So why, why do we wanna set the precedence of vacating that? Even though, I mean, we could do that throughout all kinds of areas of Mead County. Why, why, why do we wanna make a special exception just to? Particularly landowners? I mean, what's it hurt at being there?
I frankly don't think it's a special exception, because we've done this for other people where roads are located in a different. Dedicate where their actual road could be built and then get rid of the section line. We've done that for other people too. So I, I take exception to you saying this is special.
Well, I can see it starting to become a precedent more and more. Particularly the, the more we go up into the hills. And I guess I wanna know why planning was so opposed to it.
I was surprised by it too. Um, my general argument, I know that there's been emails made to commissioners besides me, raising issues with this that. And they didn't copy me for whatever reason. Um, and by my understanding, their argument is thinking that it can never be built, but, but it does no harm, leave it in place.
Okay.
I, I, I got comments from residents out there before I ever heard from anybody in planning.
Mike, Mike, now this, this, keep in mind, this was passed by the commission on, our May fourteenth meeting. And, and so basically, our options are, and Ken, correct me if I'm wrong. Our options are, we could, uh, we could repeal that vote, or we could rec, move to reconsider it. Is that, that correct?
Yes, the motion be to reconsider at a future meeting, so that the parties have an opportunity to appear, present whatever discussion they wanna have.
Most of these discussions can be had at, at a reconsidering unless we choose not to reconsider.
Correct.
Okay.
So I have a question, Ken. When were our minutes published?
Uh, they would've been published at the May twenty-eighth. Or they would've been put in the paper the, a week after that.
Well, we took our action on May fourteen. We publish. So it would've been, they published May twenty-second.
And it's, and it's been filed with the registered deeds. So it is at this point a public record.
Well. Yeah, I guess I don't, I've never addressed this question, and that is, my understanding, twenty days after publication is final.
Correct.
So if you vacate a section line, then come back.
You have to what?
You have to pay.
Oh, it's past, it's past the time.
Yes, yes, I think you're right. I think at this point, it had reverted ownership. So that is a factor. If you reverse, then you are taking this, the section line back as a public highway and taking their land from them.
That's, that's a question I have, and I don't know the legal answer.
We don't have procedural rules in place for the board, so.
You can certainly move, if, if the majority of the board wishes to reconsider, you can certainly do that. But I think this is not that easy. That's why you have a public hearing, and that's why you expect people to show. Sometimes information doesn't get out, sometimes people don't. Uh, and I, and I certainly appreciate that there's people on the Planning Commission that weren't happy that, that planning hadn't put the information on the public docket. I wasn't either. Um, but sometimes errors are made. I don't, I don't think it was done nefariously or anything like that. I think it was just got missed. So, um, one of the reasons why I think going to this kind of new format, that planning's going to be better. But, um, I, I don't know what the legal answer is. But, you know, the other thing is, if you publish on the twenty-second, it hasn't quite been twenty days. So I don't know if you can move to reconsider. I don't know how the publication impacts it. I don't know if it's already been filed with the registered deeds. I'm not sure it's, it's valid at the registered deeds office until your twenty days pass. It's always reversible till then. Certainly isn't a referendum process.
So when's the twenty days? What, what's the date of the twentieth date?
Yeah, you generally don't count the day of publication. So, and then, so I'm just, I'm just, well, I, I don't know any of these answers.
Yeah, I asked that question this morning, is what, is how long do we have and.
Well, I mean, since, since we voted, I, you know, I got information and that, that I didn't have, you know, when I voted. I, I would vote differently if we reconsidered it. Uh, you know, based on some of the information I got since then, talking with them from planning. So I don't know, I. I, I would like to reconsider it, but, you know, I, I think it would be good if we would've had, if we had five commissioners here to vote. Cause, you know, we, we very well could have a two-two vote, which then, you know, it would remain, it would remain the same, right?
Correct, the, the motion to reconsider would, would be defeated.
Yeah. Well, if we had, but if we're, if we're. If we're up against the timeline and, you know, we can't get five votes, then.
Well, I don't think you're up against the timeline, because a, a decision to reconsider is not going to reverse what was published and becomes effective tomorrow.
It would just be a recon.
Because you haven't, you're not deciding to reverse it.
It would be to reconsider at the next meeting.
Correct.
We could set a date, I guess, but that'd be as logical as anything.
Yes, so it's not gonna affect that, and, I mean, there are, are open questions as to the takings aspect. That would, that would impact both your decision to reconsider as well as a decision at that later hearing if one is set.
Right, you're right, and I'm not sure that. Majority of the moves to reconsider, whether then that prevents it from becoming effective, you know, published. That question, but I, I have no idea. I'm just raising these as, you know, just be careful, I mean. Like I said, there's a reason you hold a public hearing. And then we should probably make a policy that you're not filing anything until. That would include Platts and everything else. That you can't file anything that's final until the twentieth day of publication.
I thought Lana. Used to hold Platts until the, the twenty days post.
That'd be a question for her, I don't know. This, this was filed, and it was authorized for the auditor to file. And, but, yes, holding it for twenty days would make more sense. Is, anything you do is considered either an ordinance or a resolution and can be challenged.
Right, it could be, it could be appealed, and, I mean, you could get in a weird situation where somebody Platts a subdivision. All of a sudden, they're selling lots, and all of a sudden, somebody files for an election to get rid of the subdivision. Who are all limbo, and you got a bunch of.
But even in this case, we're up against the twenty days.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I, I guess, I, I would like to know specifically why. Planning or on the record or something, why they were against this. Was it again? Just my thing of making special considerations for, I mean, that's how I look at it, cause I can't think of any other reason.
Do you have anything to say? I could ask Mike if he had briefly.
You know, I guess I take exception again to the fact that we're doing special. I believe my vote was consistent with numerous other votes. For other landowners.
But you know what? I'm gonna look at them a lot differently from that one.
Well.
Well, and, ma'am, there's a question, I mean, there's a lot of questions with this too. I mean, section lines are technically supposed to be handled by the commission. Does it have to go before the planning board?
No, the commission has directed it going.
And I, I just. Mike, do you have anything to say? You've been sitting patiently, and I just think this is a lot of big reason you guys, Charnholms, are here, just briefly.
I guess, uh, Mike Charnholm, Mead County Planning Board. I'd been contacted shortly after our planning meeting. This month by some landowners and residents that were in the area, not aware of the section line vacation. We told them how we voted and the purpose for why we voted and relayed the information.
Can you pull him, Mike, a little closer?
Yep, absolutely, sir. And to answer your question, Doreen, is we don't feel that setting the precedence of re, uh, vacating or relocating section lines out of convenience. Is a precedence that we feel that we should be setting for individual landowners for their sole purpose. Felt this was something that was done for that convenience. And plus, we don't feel that we should be relocating a section line to a newly built road for the county to be taking on into their books in the future. Um, a lot of landlock issues that we have come before, um, planning, and this can create that issue, um, in the future. Yes, landowners, same landowner as there is now, but we've seen where areas have been divided up. And, and when that gets divided up, there's no access and there's no feasibility. And if, uh, people feel that, you know, that road is un, unbuildable, well, that's a matter of opinion of one person. Um, we've built a lot tougher roads, obviously, than that one there to, to put it in. So just to say that road's unbuildable is just in a matter of opinion. Didn't feel that that was, um, valid reasons to solely, you know, vacate section lines and move them half a mile away.
Thanks. Does that address most of your questions, Doreen, with?
Uh, well, yeah, and, and I guess part of that is, is, uh. And then when the other Platts showed up, or the other action showed up today on today's agenda. Are we looking at? Possibly the county taking over another road? Because I would hope we aren't.
What, what, what action are you talking about?
The, um. That, that Lamp Fair.
The widening of the right of way.
We, we already, we already controlled Fort Meadway.
I, I know we control Fort Meadway. I'm talking about, are we going to control?
Ralphs, Ralphs Way?
Ralphs Way, this, Ralphs Way wasn't on the agenda.
No, I'm talking about that short.
Well, right now, we need action or a decision made on, on what we have before us. And what we have before us is, is whether we reconsider this resolution to vacate this section line. And that's whether we move on. If we move on, then we're taking no action, and therefore, we're not going to reconsider it. Or I get a motion to reconsider it, and then we can set a time and a date for that.
Okay, I'll, I'll move to reconsider the vacation of the right of way. And, uh, the date would be the next meeting? Twenty-fifth of June?
I'll second that.
Motion in the second to reconsider, uh, this, this resolution, which is set for the June twenty-fifth meeting. Any discussion?
And the reason that I'm making that motion to, for the twenty-fifth of June rather than day, so that we have five commissioners here. And so we, we don't have a tie. So then every commissioner gets a chance to weigh in on this.
Feeling awful sick on the twenty-fifth of June. Any, any discussion to that motion?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna vote no. Uh, while I appreciate, like I said, planning people that were concerned that it wasn't properly, their, their position wasn't properly noticed on the agenda. Which I totally agree with, the fact I brought it up multiple times, at least, well, at least more than once during that meeting, that they had, the majority had voted against it. I thought there'd one, had been one person voted with me. I couldn't find it on the agenda. I was having, trying to look up the agenda at the time, and I couldn't find it. Otherwise, I would've given the exact number. And in fact, we held a public hearing, had no opposition in the public hearing.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's call for an electronic vote.
It didn't pop up on my screen.
I got to vote twice.
I voted yea. Motion.
I'll vote yea. I don't know what's wrong with my computer, but it's not getting to pop up.
Did you sign in by any chance?
I'm in.
Did you log in?
Hey, motion carries, three to one.
He went out and came back in. Go to a different meeting then, I'll tell you.
Brings us down to the consent calendar. There's a, a quick issue we wanna clear up in the minutes from last time, Doreen.
Yeah, I wanna add under, uh, in the minutes, under B, under routine business. Under the Sheriff's Office jail. I want to add that Sheriff West. Informed the board that the correction officers. Have moved to, uh, twelve-hour work shifts. Which results in an eighty-six hour. Work schedule.
Without approving that, then they get overtime, they would.
They change the overtime rules.
Yeah.
Deborah requested the change, basically, to cover her paperwork trail.
Well, and he actually said that, yes, because it's addressed under, under four, if we just didn't get it under five, it would appear in both places.
Right, it, it, it's under dispatch, the dispatch people are listed, but the correction officers aren't.
Oh, that's just a correction. It's really, the minutes aren't approved, so there's, there's no need to.
You would correct them at this point and then approve as corrected.
As approved as corrected, yes, that's right. We don't need a motion to that, we just need to correct that.
No, because you see, you have number five is sheriff's office jail, which that's where.
Suggestion, cut and paste from, West also reported dispatch department would be switching to a twelve-hour work shift and cut and paste that down to sheriff's office jail, changing it to corrections officers. Consistent language.
So I'll make a motion to amend that a minute.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor to amend the minutes to reflect that. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes as amended. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Approve the rest of it.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Down to J one, executive session. Motion to go into executive session for?
Oh, I don't see anything on that.
I don't think we have any.
No, there is.
There is. Yep, there's legal.
Well, and there's something for, for highway legal too.
That, yeah, that's, yeah, illegal, we got legal.
Yeah.
We got legal.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Yeah.
Is there any personnel?
I don't see any personnel. Motion is second, who made the second?
I did.
Motion is second to go into executive session for legal and personnel. Any discussion to that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Really early.